So we will open the planning board meeting for Tuesday, February seventh, twenty twenty three. This is being conducted in a hybrid manner pursuant to general laws. We are recording it.
It online after it is completed for everyone to access. If anybody is recording it, that is fine. You just need to let us know. Anybody recording? Okay. Um, seven o'clock town planners report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Okay, uh, first item of business, just for anybody, defendants or anybody online. The public hearing for the non-residential subdivision at six thirty-six College Highway has been postponed and will be taking place on February twenty first. Originally scheduled for today, but rescheduled due to error in the legal advertisement. Okay, uh, planning board has received a notice from Mr. Val Chevitz regarding seventy-two Mort Vining Road. Um, we have talked about this at a couple of other points, but the notice essentially is that he will be removing on the acreage from the chapter sixty-one program. Uh, and for the sake of everyone who's listening and for the record, the planning board has, um, examined, uh, probably before before as to whether or not it was priority parcel for acquisition, and it was not on the current list.
Seventy-two?
Seventy-two, yes, are the former property of our.
Oh, yes. Okay.
We are currently working on an application for district, uh, local technical assistance through the Plenary Valley Planning Commission. Uh, last year, we received an award in the amount of twenty thousand dollars to supplement master plan, uh, chapter development. Here, we are looking at pursuing assistance, excuse me, in, uh, overview and, uh, contemplated rewrite of fortunes of chapter three fifteen, the subdivision regulations, and also aligning those with the flexible residential development, um, special permit, so the expectations, um, aligned between those two standards, uh, as those two references, excuse me. Another component of that, uh, really driven through the master plan process is, uh, spatial analysis effort, um, where we, where layered maps will help to identify where opportunities lie, uh, where, like I said, the town's infrastructure strengths and weaknesses, um, as well as our resources are, as that process, uh, for the master plan itself comes to a pose, and then we start looking towards implementation of where, um, we can put the recommendations of our master plan, if they are related to zoning and land use, uh, into practice. Another option of that also could be looking at, uh, the lake area, which perhaps contemplating a, an overlay district, um, that would have relaxed dimensional standards such that landowners are not always facing, um, the high standards of variances, uh, and also looking at right-of-way, um, requirements, since some of the roads are, um, they cannot be accepted, uh, as they sit right now. Okay, um, I have a few notes that I will be distributing with the planning board members, uh, related to a public hearing held last night in the town of South Haven, uh, as, uh, as are many other communities in the state, uh, they, um, opened up a public hearing for short-term rentals and bylaws that the board had written, you know, over the summer into the fall. Uh, so I'll share those notes, uh, as we work towards, uh, the next meeting on the twenty-first, uh, where we'll be opening up a hearing on the same topic. Um, and I just sent an email off to planning board members, uh, regarding announcement for Valley Development Council meeting where they will be talking specifically about short-term rentals. Uh, last item I'll report is that I met with, uh, Frank Rillo today and a number of department heads here in town, um. He's under, he is the new owner of, uh, Tri PBJ Marina. So that's the property of Point Bro Road with, uh, the launch, um, Tongue One Pizza, and there's a uh, so some additional, uh, square footage, building square footage, um, on the west side of that building, uh. He intends to fill in one of the overhead doors, relocate, uh, an overhead door to the side of the building and change the configuration of, uh, rental space within that building. So I do expect that he'll be coming, um, before the planning board with those changes. Mr. Chair, that's it.
Okay. Uh, seven oh five, public comment. Does anybody have anything for the board tonight that is not on the agenda? Okay. Um, seven ten P M, one fifty-nine Berkshire Avenue. Continued public hearing on storm work and commitment application. All right, um, I guess Derek on.
Yeah, this is.
All right.
I just made it.
Um, all right, so where do things stand?
Okay, um, good afternoon, gentlemen, board members, town planning. See, we, uh, I guess we go back all the way to, uh, December twenty-third where a review letter had been sent to me from Randy and, uh, Mr. Goddard. I worked on providing some comments to those, uh, six points. I believe I've been able to address the, the six points and, and provide the design information that I used and, uh, calculations for that. Unfortunately, I provided it today, so they haven't had a chance to look at any of it. Um, I believe that I, I'll need also a small discussion to, um, maybe go over some of the details and, and the, and two of the points that have to do with the, uh, the routing and, um, become, you know, combining, uh, the flows from, from two different locations. There's a bit of a, a technical um, situation there where I just have to discuss the assumptions that I used with them. Once that's approved or, or cleared verbally, I could then, um, move forward and start, not start, but finish the, uh, structural details based on the dimensions that come out of that, uh, confirmation. So I'd say it's it's a, uh, a positive positive step in the right direction here. I just, um, I just do, do need a little bit more discussion to, um, confirm basically some assumptions on my end. I think that's where I stand. Uh, I wish I was a little bit further with that, but fortunately, that's where it is right now.
You get a chance to look at any of it or no?
Oh, I haven't had a chance to, uh, review just yet, um, but, uh, Derek and I just exchanged a little bit of correspondence this morning in advance of this meeting. Um, so if I can paraphrase, um, planning board members might recall, there's an off-site flow generated, well, from sheet pasture road, cut, uh, passes under the rail trail from the golf course. And so that's the, I think, the technical point that he's referencing. Essentially, uh, the intended design has this in a single basin, so both those off-site flows as well as the, what are called the additional runoff generated onsite are deposits locations. So there's a few assumptions that I'm happy to facilitate, um, or, uh, rather coordinate immediately between, uh, Derek, Randy, um, and your stroke.
Um, all right, and I guess I asked us of both of you, since you guys know where things are and have more technical expertise than any of us, um, let's assume between now and the next meeting on the twenty first, twenty first, that, um, you, you guys talk, you guys figure it out. So on the twenty first, everything is in decent shape and we've, we've addressed all the points and can kind of move forward. What are we looking at for a timeframe moving forward? As far as what it will take to get, uh, this finalized? What are you, what are you thinking that it's gonna take to complete that, complete what you need to do?
If, you know, if we, if we discuss within the next, uh, week or two and I have something, uh, based off that discussion to provide to you by the twenty first with, uh, another minor review and maybe something else, maybe within a month after that. So I, I would say, you know, March, by the same time in March, March twentieth, thereabouts have the, you know, documents that can be more or less submitted for a final approval. I think we're, we're getting to that point.
Okay.
All right.
You, are you in concurrence with that based on what you've seen?
It's, uh, it's all going to depend on, uh, these final.
Those are addressed.
That's right.
All right, um.
I might mention, looks like February twenty-first meeting is going to be quite full. We have three public hearings plus the normal activity. So we're thinking of carrying this to March?
I mean, I would rather put it into February and hope that between John and Randy and Derek, that they could, over the next two weeks, you know, go over what was submitted, have discussions so that it's more of a report to us and, and hopefully stuff has been worked through and, you know, whatever the issues are, maybe there's more time to even address them in the timeframe. But if there's not any issues and we can kind of move to the next step, you know, we're relying on, on you guys or on, on John a lot to sort of give us the information about how they see it. So, um, I, I'm hoping that it's it's not going to be too long of a meeting at the next one, but I'd rather just keep it on the agenda and keep tabs on it so that we can try to get it to some degree of completion before, you know, folks can get out there and do work, right? I'd like to get that done as quickly as possible so that work can be completed. Um, so I'd rather keep it on and then, you know, we can address it as, we don't have to kill ourselves on it, but if it, if it can be done quickly, then great. If not, then you know, we'll move it on to the next meeting. But I'd like to keep tabs on it. I don't want it to just get away. And then we're sitting here in May dealing with the thing when work can be done. And you're gonna have to deal with the runoff, um, during that timeframe. So, um, all right, what is, let me see the agenda.
I'll give us a, a few minutes of an update. Perhaps fill in elsewhere, but we hit term.
Yeah, no, I mean, like I said, I don't, we don't need a ton of, um, and why don't we even put it, I mean, put it at, um, put it at seven oh six. So, uh, you know, who knows how long we can get started on time.
Sure.
Some, um, um, then we have a little bit more time. So do I hear a motion to continue one fifty-nine Berkshire Avenue public hearing till, to seven oh six P M on February twenty first?
Marcus Phelps, so move.
Uh, do I hear a second?
Just a second.
Do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Up singer, I.
David Sutton, I.
Dave Spina, I.
Okay. All right, so we'll see you on the twenty first, Eric.
Thank you very much. See you then.
Thank you. Good night.
Have a good night.
All right. Um, seven twenty P M, uh, Mort Vining Road preliminary subdivision application, continued public hearing.
Yeah, good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Steve Salvini from Salvini Associates with Brad Moir, attorney Brad Moir, excuse me.
All right, so, um, um, I did talk to Brad the other day so that, um, he knows for the board. I spoke with town council. Um, we talked about um, this application and, um, what exists in the bylaws now, um, and the regulations now, and, um, the advice was at this time for this particular application to, um, that they will not need to submit the other plan for us to consider. Um, so we have in front of us, um, the conventional plan uh, to consider on a preliminary basis and, and do a vote on. Um, anything new that needs to be submitted, um, or that, that you guys have to submit? I shouldn't say that needs to be submitted, but that, but, um, you wish to submit at this point?
Not that I'm, no.
I don't believe so. And I appreciate the call.
Right.
Yeah, after you talk to him. Um, uh, not a problem. Um, so, um, um, so anybody on the board have any questions and we can re, we can take a quick, but a quick look at the plan if anybody wanted to, but.
I had a question about the, uh, road entrances as to what's across the street from those. Is there a house or whatever?
Not covered.
Yeah, it'd be good.
Do you want to pull up the, yeah, John, are you able to quickly pull that up?
Yeah, sure. Uh, I'll start with the plans and then go from there. How about that?
I don't think we, we haven't heard from any butters or whatever. I don't think we've gotten any input from the public, have we, huh?
No, and you know, I mean, I.
This is preliminary.
Yeah, it is. So we, we did treat it as, because it's a little unclear, at least in my mind, but we did treat it as a public hearing.
Yes.
Um, so it was notice what's given to a butters.
Right.
Um.
We were trying to be conscientious about not having the road come out, uh, perpendicular to somebody's house right across the street.
That's.
Or there's room for development on the other side, so we can't.
So it's a kind of open area, yeah. So where, um, the other thing that's helpful to me, if you do the plan, um, I think there's a capability now where you can put a, uh, there we go. Area photo, I don't know where's.
Oh, yeah, an area image on top of that.
Image, either underneath or on top, you know, put the drawing on top of that. So we sort of get an idea of what is around it and what are the areas, rather than just a blank, white piece of paper with.
We have the capability.
Pretty lines on it.
Yeah.
Right.
Pretty cool nowadays.
Yeah, you're gonna have to deal with, you know, line of sight and all that kind of stuff from the, from the entrances and exits. So we're, you know, that's, that, that, to me, we found that to be a pretty helpful map generation. Over later. All right. Um, any other board questions or comments?
No, I'm just, uh, line of sight on the other, more the most on more binding, how close to us to that curve. It looks like it's at the back a little bit, right?
Yeah, there's still line of sight. It's, it's deceiving on the plan, but yeah, it's there.
A tough curve.
Yeah, it is, but because it curves and drops down, but the line is the, uh, the site distance is there.
Do you have those two entrances staked? So.
Actually, we have the entire road layout with the cul-de-sacs are all staked out as of right now. Yep. Which is a little ahead of the curve, but we did that so the client would know exactly where everything is.
Okay.
I live on Mort Vining and I ride my motorcycle that way, so I worry about roads on curves.
So you're one of those guys.
I'm one of them.
You should be able to see with the stakes coming in and around if you're down there. Absolutely.
All right, any other questions from the board?
The only other one was under, uh, three fifteen eighteen, there was a requirement for a park. And I know you had started, or you had described an area.
Yep.
Uh, my only concern would be that it's, it's just swamp, that it's land, you know, no one needs anyway. But actually, the park area should be something that is usable and accessible.
Look, if you look on that plan, we have, there's three areas. There's the, there's wetlands that are going through there. There is the, uh, detention basin that we have designed for that. And then above and beyond that, there's the area that we would designate as a park area. I think it's a six-point, six-acre lot. And out of that, you have the wetlands extracted, you have the store basin extracted, and what's left is the area that we would.
So what's net?
I think it's four point four, something like that acres, yeah.
Net?
Net. Correct.
Usable, usable.
Correct. And that's where we were thinking about putting, like, little benches and stuff, because what's gonna happen is when this gets built, the, the wetland's gonna thrive because it's not gonna be mowed any longer. And so you'll have a resurgence, let's say, of, of, uh, of wetland stuff and little critters and all that. So you can sit on your bench and watch the birds and all that. They're kind of nice.
And, uh, I guess Conservation Commission and Board of Health still are, have looked at things.
Not the Board of Health so far because we didn't do the definitive.
Yeah.
But the Conservation Commission gave us the approval to cross the wetlands. It's right there. And that was the, the crux of this whole project was to be able to cross through on the southerly side so that we could have a loop road coming up. We had to cross through a very narrow wetland. And what we're doing is we took a little portion of that, portion of the wetland we're crossing, and we're making it on a two-to-one ratio larger on the south side. So it'll actually, it the wetland that's there is a, is a wet meadow. It's a, it's a hayfield. And they were concerned about the little critters that are in there, but this will no longer be mowed, so it'll, it'll regenerate back to what it was supposed to be. So the mowing will stop. We, uh, create a wetlands to the south. And the only portion that's gonna be impacted is where the road goes through. So it should revert back to whatever nature it intended to be. Right. What else you got, Marcus?
Yeah. Well, we'll save the rest for the definitive. Not much more. A little bit, a little bit. Could be continued.
Should be continued.
Keep him in. So actually, you answered the other part. It's good. Conservation Commission.
Yeah.
It's on their radar and they've given the okay.
Correct, but they gave the okay to this plan. If this plan changes, then they want to review it, any changes that were occurred. Board of Health doesn't get it until we do definitive.
In the, it, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but my memory is that the way this was set up as a conventional allowed for less wetland intrusion, right? Is that the, was that, I remember hearing this from.
Um, not less wetland intrusion.
More road. Hmm?
More road?
Well.
You could do the loop around.
If we, if we, if we went for a, a flexible, we would actually disturb more well, that's because we'd have to have a longer loop coming around by, by doing the, the configuration we have, we'll make a U-shape.
Right.
We actually have less impervious surface. We, we, uh, have less impact on the wetland. And because we're not doing flexible, we have larger lots. So it's the larger lot size to us that was the, the tipping point where flexible tries to maximize open space, and we're doing that by not being flexible, by having larger lots. So.
But there was a reduced, and I, maybe I'm using the wrong word, but there was a reduced impact on the wetlands by, on the conventional plan versus doing.
Correct, that's why we went this way. And, and the Conservation Commission, when we submitted this, we had to show our alternative analysis that showed why ours was the better choice.
Right, that's what I, yeah.
Yeah, and they, and they agreed.
Okay. All right, um, any other, uh, questions or comments from the board? Um, any questions or comments from public officials? Okay, um, any public questions or comments? All right, um, do I hear a motion, um, to close the hearing?
Marcus Phelps, so move.
Do I hear a second?
Just a second.
Uh, we'll do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Up singer, I.
David Sutton, I.
Dave Spina, I.
All right, um, you submitted the, um, waiver request, correct? That's in the file?
Yes, yes. I can.
No, 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 that's okay. I just wanted to make sure, um, so I can reopen it, we didn't, um, that it was, uh, thought of it a second late, but, um, just wanted to make sure that that was.
Correct, there is a letter here.
Yeah, we had submitted initial ones and then based on conversations and we have, we amended that recently.
Okay, as long as that's there.
Correct.
Um, um, and this is not a, you know, um, I just wanted to make sure that you had it on record. Um, all right. Um, so do I hear, I gotta just find the language because I almost forget it. I usually rely on Marcus.
Three choices.
Um.
For this, we had three choices.
Well, why don't you make the mark, you can make the motion.
Come on. Bring your pack.
You were, you were entertaining us.
Yeah, that's, go ahead. What, you want to make the motion?
Yes, by having you do it.
You know the language, exactly.
That was pretty funny.
Makes me find it. Um, no, no motion? All right.
Marcus Phelps, I make a motion to uh, give tentative approval to the preliminary subdivision for seventy-four Mort Vining Road.
Do I hear a second?
Second, Richard Up Singer.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
I.
David Sutton, I.
Dave Spina, I.
Okay. So you're all set with the preliminary, um, then we'll see you again with the.
Red initiative.
Okay, so thank you. Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
John is the writer. Hold on, I'm gonna use this.
I'm sorry.
No, we don't, we don't need to.
We don't need to sign anything?
No.
Okay.
Just covering all the basics.
Yeah, no, it's, I appreciate the option, but.
I'd like to send this to you myself.
Yeah.
It's a little bit complicated.
Um, all right, um, next, we have a discussion about forty-nine Sam West Road, updated chains of use discussion. Jesse, come on up. How are you?
Good, how you doing?
Good.
Cool, if I come up, Jesse, are.
Yeah, this is, uh, Tom, he's one of my tenants at forty-nine Sam West Road.
And we need your name and address.
Jesse Saltmire's two hundred A Hillside Road.
Tom Sinowski, uh, forty-seven East Silver Street, Westfield.
Um, so what we're looking, what, um, we're looking, this is informational for us. People, uh, Tom works on cars and he's starting his own business and he's looking to obtain a, a used car license to buy and sell vehicles at auctions. And, um, so he uses, um, one of the bays that he rents from me as a, as a, he fixes up cars and, um, and then, um, he wants to resell them at the auction, so buy and sell at the auction. And what the on our, um, forty-nine, I'll call it forty-nine Sam West facilities and, um, we don't, per our lease, we don't allow him to have any additional vehicles on the property, like outside the garage door bay itself other than, uh, two vehicles, and then whatever vehicles fit inside his bay that he's working on. So this um, license that he would be looking for would be for the sole purpose of uh, obtaining uh, or buying and selling the vehicles at the auction, and there'd be no, like, transactions taking place at the, at forty-nine Sam West Road. Um, so that would be our outlines of of what.
Yeah, I mean, I think my initial reaction would be that the license issue is a select board issue, right? So that's gonna go to them.
Hmm.
They can certainly. They can certainly put on the conditions um, about I, I think they can put on conditions as far as, you know, where it occurs and when it's stored and things like that. You know, from us, from our standpoint, it would simply be whether what's being done at forty-nine Sam West is within current, is there a current permit for the facility or is it, is it?
There is.
Is there any permit that applies for?
I think back in the nineties, there was a a, a permit granted for repair. But I'm not, I'd have to look that up to.
So it'd be like in the
Speak to them.
At the IR zone?
It is.
So there would have been a special, well, depending on how long ago it was, may or may not have a special permit.
Yeah.
But the only thing would be whether, um, you know, you would need something for the property to, to address what he's doing there.
Hmm.
Um, in some way, so that's all I see from our standpoint.
Okay.
Is it would be the property permit and the use that's going on there.
Hmm.
Um, and whether that fits within it. The others, the license, used car licenses, select.
So what would you need from, like, I would, like, I think it does fit in there based on the preliminary research that I've done, but what officially do you need from us to?
Right now, we don't need anything officially. I mean, I can, John, you can see whether you can just pull it. Um, if he has any questions, he can reach out to you.
Okay.
Um, let's just see if we can pull the permit, see what's in there and then kind of go from there.
Okay.
Um, and, you know, I'm not sure there's anything that needs to change on, on this property.
Yeah, there, yeah.
Not likely, but I mean, it's, you know, it's in the IR, I suspect that there's a, you know, whatever language is in there is probably broad enough to accommodate it. Small use like this, but we can figure out whether anything needs to be changed with that. Okay, the license stuff. Um, you know, I would I suppose what I would do thinking from a border standpoint is um, you know, we can look into what the deal is with the permit, but I would go, go try to get the license first. And whatever conditions are attached to that.
Okay.
Sort of if you need to change something with that with the permit on the property, you know, you can do that, but then you, you already know what you have a license to do.
Right.
And whatever conditions apply to that. And then that can be incorporated if needed, again, if needed into a permit.
Okay.
So that would be my advice. Anybody have anything else that they want to add to that?
Well, I'll say, Marcus, Marcus has got the Bible out. So are, are you gonna, after you repaired the cars, are you gonna sell them on the site there at the property there?
No, nothing will be sold on the property.
Oh, nothing will be sold on the property? It's just a repair? Processing.
It's, yeah, basically. I mean, I'm not but I'm speaking for him, but he's just, well, cuz I'm speaking for him because I don't want it done there. Like, th- these are my rules, like, so that's why I'm talking, I'm like um, you know, cuz I don't want people coming on on my property to see my, see my stuff, you know, to buy a vehicle from him or wha- whatever, whatever the transaction may be, whatever. So that, that's why I'm you know, speaking for it, but yeah, though it would just be a buy and sell vehicle at the auction.
Yeah, so you're, you're repairing the vehicles there.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah.
So it's vehicle repair. You just transform down, sell them at the auction, pick them up and they'll come back for you.
Yep.
Nothing goes on in the property?
Yep, other than the repair.
And it's inherently limited by the number, the number of vehicles you can have there is limited by that.
By the, by our private lease that we have.
Where you, are you at the store?
Yeah.
Or work on.
Hmm.
Um, okay. All right, so yeah, I mean, that's the, you know, we'll, John can pull that, we can take a look at it and communicate to you whether at least preliminarily, we see any issues with the use um, in the permit. And then the next step would be for you all to go to the select board for the license.
Okay.
All right.
All right, sounds good.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Yeah, no, if you, yeah, that'd be great. All right. Uh, Depot Square.
I'm sorry, that's for me.
That is for you.
Um, yeah, that's me, I guess. Um, so.
Depot Square and one fifty-nine Berkshire, I'm just gonna turn to you every single time, so.
That's, that's fine.
You all knows, John.
Thanks. I, I'm not taking I'm not getting paid for them to be the consultant, I'm just for everybody now.
To make me get the thermometer.
Uh, um, I'm sorry, nothing new here today. Uh, I did take note that, I think that request came back in, uh, in the summer, perhaps the early summer uh, for the bond reduction. Uh, at, at the last meeting, I kind of made a cursory remark about what to do with it. Um, if the board has no objection, um, I think it makes sense seeing that there's no activity on us for the time being for uh, me to send a letter back to them regarding their request. I'll outline, I'll reiterate the request that Randy has for the information he needs in order to sign off, which I think in turn is part of, uh, what the planning board needs.
Yeah.
Or to move forward on the stormwater bond. Um, so if everyone's comfortable, I'll just, but then if these are part of the funds, then when they have all the ducks in the row, they can come back to me.
Works for me.
Uh, that, that, I kind of ran out of page, uh, I like a one pager, Jeff. When I can, uh, so that's Depot Square.
Okay. One forty-one Congamon Road, request for a minor plan change discussion. Ken.
Yeah.
There it is.
The only one in the building.
Only one left in the audience. Hello, again. Did you have anything on line? Or should I just show the plans?
I couldn't put it up on there. You're looking to roll out one now.
Just, uh, name and address for the rest of the.
Uh, Penagleton, one forty-one, ten nine road.
Let's see, let's see what. Since, um, since we last met back in September and getting the approval to begin work from conservation from the original plans, we took away a lot of vegetation. Um, we put in silk fences, we put in erosion, one over, okay. You know, raising control. And then what, in the area, the area we're discussing is right here. Okay? This area was all brush. And when we took, and they said that they, you know, they were putting a wall in there and we were gonna put a fence up on the top uh, between the house and the, between the property and the, and the neighbor's house.
Yeah.
When we put the, when Crestview put the parking lot in, in, in cut away the area they needed to, to bring the bring it level, we realized that the original plans created were not really topographically accurate. So what happened was is there's, at the, at the property line of the neighbor four feet away down to the parking lot is almost three and a half foot drop. It looks like this. So, so we finished everything and in discussions with landscapers and other people trying to figure out what are we gonna do with this space? It kept coming back, you gotta put a wall, you gotta put a wall, you gotta put a wall. That's where we are today. Um, I'm here asking for, it, it's more safety purposes and, and cosmetics than anything else um, to do this wall. With that, with the with the way that it was before on a bank, an embankment, literally, if you look at that, the fence was going in the middle of that embankment. So from the property line down a couple, maybe a foot and a half, it was dropping down and the fence would go up. So the neighbor would be able to fall into that fence and fall off the thing. So what we're doing is we're going to hopefully you'll let us do that. We're going to put in a thirty-eight to forty-two inch high wall that's going to run along the, the other wall up, up, excuse me, I'm looking at this now, that's not there's, the wall is not going this far. I didn't not see that before. It stops, it stops right there. It's only there for the purpose of, um, of the parking lot. And this is, this is all gonna be landscaped out and look okay, but the wall will not go that far.
Ken, I've got some pictures of them that come up on the screen there.
Yeah. So the, the fence positioning is not going to change. It's gonna be same number of feet away from the neighbor's house. Only thing, it's gonna be a little bit elevated because now it's not gonna be halfway down a slope. It's going to be on the top of the hill. And we'll still have a six-foot fence, picket fence, same as originally planned. I'm looking to build the wall sixty-three feet um, made out of, um, eight by twelve, eight by eighteen by twelve blocks, landscape blocks, the, um, you know, with stone underneath and whatnot. And, um, that's that's what I'm looking to show you as a change. An additional change was made. You'll see a dark portion right here. That was a little oops as well, that, um, was not identified on the plans. When Crestview put in the original wall, we're like, okay, we've got this big eight-foot void that people are gonna fall off the hill. So we extended the concrete wall, black, big huge black concrete wall, eight feet toward Beach Road. Um, and I don't know if any.
To add to this?
We added to it. It's already done.
Okay.
Yes. That was added. Um, a- as of today, on top of this wall is a forty-two inch high, um, to code railing. And on the handicap ramp, there, the handicap railings are now there. They were installed today.
I knew, you, did you get a picture today?
Yeah.
Did you see really?
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Oh, well, there, okay, well, that's the mess.
That's the story, I, um, let's see if I can. That. Look from one photo to the next for me, but we'll run to you then.
Thank you. That, um, that embankment and dirt, we've been working with it for several months, three months, trying to figure out what to do and everybody had all these great opinions, but when it came down to it, um, block, well, there's, there's the there's the railings that just went up.
Yeah.
And that's from the railings and you can see, see the banquet? And somewhere, I don't know if you can zoom, there's a, there's a pole that we left in that, in the ground.
Of that right there.
Uh, right above, no, up higher. Oh, I'm sorry. Up.
The one with the orange? Right there?
Right there.
Yeah.
That pole, the, the ground is still left there so that the pole never moved from when, when that surveyed it. So that's where the fence is gonna go from that, from the far pole through that pole to the railing is the still where the fence is. And you can see that that was on the embankment.
So that's where the fence line is and then the wall is to the right of that.
The wa- the wall is going to be right in front of the fence line, right in front of it. Uh, we're actually gonna be gaining a foot or two between the parking and the wall. It's no longer, you know, sloping right down to the parking lot. It's going to be cuz the wall is only eight inches, uh, twelve inches, excuse me, twelve inches deep. And it will, um, I think it's gonna be pretty too. I mean, better than having a landscape problem like that. The neighbor's happy.
Think that when they cut into a hillside with that little dirt, that it wouldn't, wasn't gonna cause some sort of fallaway there that was gonna need to be handled.
We'll be recorded, so I won't, I won't go into.
Edge of that house and your property line, you took away all that graduating slope, you're gonna have to put in a retaining wall. Right?
Yep, yep. Well, believe me, I tried to go around it. I tried not to.
Not an engineer.
But, no, and I. Crestview, uh, Crestview told me day one, this is gonna be a problem. And I said, no, 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 it's right here.
Have you made the, um, a better aware of the new?
Oh, very much so. Uh, I, I was with her and her son, um, this past week. And that originally, when I spoke to John to, about this, um, we, I was talking about other options of the fencing, uh, maybe running um, a four-foot fence because now it was gonna be higher on top of the hill. And, and the lady's like, oh, I, I still wanna have a six-foot fence and, you know, higher the better. So that's why I said, well, I don't need a letter from her necessarily because we're, we're giving her what, originally what was on the plan, which was a six-foot fence, only it's higher. Um, the only thing that they did add that they wanted me to do, um, I can show you on this plan. At the bottom of this wall, there used to be three bushes. And those bushes were requested by the neighbor originally. And now that she sees this nice wall sitting there, she's like, oh, I can use that for something else. I don't wanna cover it up with, with big bushes. So w- w- the bushes will be eliminated and not there. And, but as, what's to show you right there? I asked him to eliminate those for that, that plan only.
And it's not.
I can show you on yours.
Sign to your brother's property.
On your brother's property, yeah. Yeah, this is the original. The original plan was a proposed retaining wall with guard, well, well, anyone know the, whatever, the bushes, where's the bushes?
Yeah, I did.
Yeah, she, she requested that, you know, I don't wanna be staring at this ugly wall. So she said, you know, what can you do? I, well, what do you want me to do? She's like, I'd like some big trees or not. So we're not gonna put the bushes anymore. She said that they are going to build something there like a table or something and, and make use of the good looking thing. It's not, it's not a, um, it wasn't for the purpose of conservation or irrigation or, or nothing like that. It was strictly a cosmetic thing. Things are always, I shouldn't say always, I don't know that much about always, but I've run into a lot of things in this project that looking at the plans, my understanding or what I was told and how people, other people interpret it is not what ends up once you start taking away brush here, taking away brush here. Um, and, you know, getting involved in the parking lot and then the curving up here, you know, it's it's always something that isn't seen by these architects or what do we call engineers? Um, I'm just so disappointed with all that, but um, I'm hoping that through this discussion, we can just say, yeah, this is, you know, I, I think it's a great safety thing as well.
So it's, um, just make sure I'm understanding it correctly. So you're putting in what's the slope now? What do you got? You got probably three feet, four feet of?
Uh, between three and four feet.
And you're putting in so basically looking at that photo from the edge of that fence that's there now.
Edge of the railing.
The railing, it will call it the railing, the black railing.
Yep.
From there to that post at the end there.
To the, you know, the landscape.
The corner of the parking, right?
Yep.
The corner of the, yeah, down from the post, actually. Um,
That's where it was before.
You are putting in, you wanna put in a retaining wall to shore up the, um, between their property and your property, even though you have a slope now. Um, and then on top of that retaining wall, you're gonna build?
Not on top of the wall.
Still on their property, uh, still on the edge of the property on the
Um, still, still on my property, but on the edge of the wall.
All right, so.
If the wall is here, right here will be the sonal tubes and whatever for that. And that's in the exact same location as it always had planned. And it's like, um, eight feet from the neighbor's house or something.
So basically you will have a couple feet of of, uh, the top of the retaining wall that is six, you know, between the, you had the fence, then you're gonna have a couple feet of the retaining wall, then
Right. I will, I will mention that the retaining wall is not going to be exactly level with the property line. It's gonna be about four inches below. Um, just because we didn't wanna make the retaining wall another eight inches taller. But it's, it's some, it's gonna end up being somewhere between thirty-eight and forty-two inches, depending on how much goes in the ground and how much stone or something, is what they told me. Gonna be five meters high. That's probably a better way for me to put it. But it it'll be an improvement.
And does the so is the retaining wall gradually gets smaller? So is the retaining wall gradually gets smaller as you get closer to the rail here?
Yes, yeah, it will do a little bit of this.
Alright.
Yes, it will.
And.
We'll go with the slope of the land.
Are you gonna have to do work on the neighbor's property?
Not at all, not one bit. There should be no reason to be cutting it.
But as, the way I look at it right now, it looks like.
We're fi- would the wall is gonna be probably five feet off her prop, of the property line.
Yeah.
Is that generally indicated by the snow fence? Can.
On the green fence, the orange fence?
Yeah.
Um.
In the relationship of where you have your fence.
That, that's what I'm having trouble.
That's, that's probably the property line.
Yeah, that's the property.
I'm having trouble going from. I'm having, so I'm looking at it, I'm seeing the railing come in at this angle. And then I am seeing the slope over here. And then I'm seeing that, you know, where the property line is, I'm just trying to, I'm not seeing the connection between the retaining wall and the railing. I'm not seeing how you're getting there, but maybe I'm without, without having to backfill a little bit on the neighbor's property. I'm not saying that's a bad thing, I'm just.
But not in, the neighbor's property is up on, is up on top of the hill.
Well, and that's fine, okay, so that's, and that's where I probably had it wrong in my head, but I'm still not understanding quite where. You're connecting the retaining wall in this railing.
Um, it's good, I think it's drawn. See there? That's, I mean, that's where it's gonna come.
No, I mean, I can, the plans, I get it, I totally get it on the plans. When I actually look at this photo, I'm having trouble.
Will you, um, you, yeah.
Seeing it, but um.
It, it goes on an angle.
Let me see what else I have.
John, get your zone over, get your, get your zone over there.
It, it doesn't go, it, it, the fence.
Balloon, you can put up there.
Fence is kinda back.
Did he?
Um, the, the fence that we're looking at on this side is back much further that way. It really could have been out here. Because the fence doesn't follow. Do you don't have a front view?
Working on. No, 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 this is better. It might have just been that.
So John.
It may have been that railing kinda.
You're a landscape architect, what do you think of this?
I think that uh the soils encountered out there are particularly sandy, um, which. Leads to uh both its construction and a, and ongoing maintenance concern. I can appreciate that putting up a wall alleviates erosion and erosion and sedimentation concern. Uh, both for Mr. Edelson's parking lot and for the, for the general area and the lakes. Um. I think that uh in doing so, the location of that fence being offset from the property line. At least provides for a more level opportunity, rather than have to start chasing that lower grade as soon as you can at the property line. To make that as gentle as possible, you take out the curse of that slope by. Installing a wall. Not to try to sell it, not getting a commission or, or pay for con- consulting on this.
Did that sand fall down from the digging or was that just the bank that was there? I'm just worried about that, that structural integrity and the, that propane tank right there.
Hmm. It answered your question, I don't know the answer because I don't control that machine that dig that digging and, and one day the bushes and stuff were there. And the next day they were gone and.
Do me a favor for safety's sake, just take a look on it, just make sure that that thing isn't getting undermined with that.
Um, yeah, I, I mean, myself, myself and the owner's son have looked at that, um. He worked time bond and he, he looked at it and said that he, he. He wasn't concerned about any integrity, at least he didn't bring it up. What he is, was concerned about was the. Quality of that tank and wants to be able to have room enough to get in there to replace the thing. Not necessarily the integrity of the ground under it, but the integrity of the tank itself.
Want that thing to roll down the hill in a, in a rainstorm between now and the walls. So what do we consider this as built situation?
I'm just, the other part I'm trying to figure out is why the retaining wall is not going up to the top of the. I guess, and I don't know enough about retaining walls, but that just threw me as odd that it's not going up to the top of the. Whatever you wanna call it, um.
Top of the ground.
That's probably the better word.
The grade, yeah, um.
The existing grade on the abutting property.
Yeah.
That's.
Could, I mean, I'm sorry.
Another role.
Why?
Yeah.
To understand your concern, the, you mentioned it was several inches down from that adjacent grade owing to the module. Of a, of a, the height of a block. Is that, am I interpreting your question correctly?
Yeah, but it, I mean, doesn't that create a potential problem? I mean, I, I get that, I get that you have certain sized blocks, but I mean, they must make blocks that are smaller, right? I mean, half size or whatever it is to accommodate that, I can't imagine that. They assume that every grade is different.
We can add another, another level of brick, right now we're taught, we're looking at five high, we could go to six high. Um, which.
You're only four inches below the, the, so you're six feet out, four inches below. It's not a super long pitch, I mean, it's not a, you know.
And there's gonna be fence there.
Right. Yeah, but now if you put a full block, you're gonna be pitching it the other way, the water's gonna run toward there. But if you put a four inch capstone on it instead of another row.
Well, there's a, there's a two inch cap on top of those eight, there is a two inch cap that will be there.
Change it, change it to a four, it'll almost be flat.
And don't know that we can get a four. But I could ask. But yeah. The um, this is, this is a picture of the brick and what the cap would look like.
Yeah.
That's, that's what we're expecting. In the, in the brick itself is, is this stuff here.
The uh, the block wall is gonna be six feet from the house?
Um, more than six feet from the house, the property line is six feet, one inch from the house.
It's six feet from the property line.
I don't know that number, but I would rough guess. Five.
So from where John is, through about here, it's gonna, it's gonna drop four inches.
Right.
That's a, that's a pitch, Mike, of about. That much.
No, 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 no.
That's not a lot, that's not a lot of pitch.
Yeah. Wait, hold on, hold on, no, no. The pi- the pitch of the retaining wall, as far as, as far as it going, the entire length, that's seventy feet.
Are you looking at the other way or you looking?
About the pitch from the house down to the park, are you talking about the walls?
The pitch from the, from the. The pitch from the beach road down to the lake is going to be, it looks like pretty significant. Like you're gonna be dropping down from a four foot or so high retaining wall down to.
Three foot maybe.
Maybe less than that, it looks like that, I.
Right.
But I could be wrong.
Uh, the retaining wall?
Sound like you're talking the other way, isn't it?
Cause the retaining wall is gonna be at ground level all the way, it's le- it's flat there. That's flat.
Right.
You see the parking lot is flat and to the left of that, it's flat right to the existing wall.
Maybe this is an, and maybe this is a matter of perspective with the photos. But I see a gap of. I don't know, six to eight feet between that railing and that. Um, um. Fencing, orange fencing that's up there. And between that railing and that orange fencing, I see property that goes straight down and you're not putting a retaining wall right there. I assume that's gotta, you gotta have a grade of the retaining wall where it goes down to almost.
Top of the fence.
Nothing, I mean, or not nothing, but.
Just step it down.
Or at least it's not a retaining wall at that point in time and it becomes visible from the neighbor's property.
The re- the retaining wall is gonna go all the way to the block. You're, I think you're talking about the fence?
No.
Well, the retaining wall is gonna go all the way to that.
I understand.
Wall and it's all gonna be a, a, a level.
So here's my question, at the end of that railing, okay, and we can look at that, I mean, go back to the where you did.
Just about this gap right here?
Yeah.
Correct.
So now this is the, this is the rail, so this is the end of the tall wall, it's gonna drift straight down and leave this exposure.
And that's what I'm saying, I mean.
What if you brought the wall?
The wall's gonna go all the way.
No, 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 I don't want, because then the, the neighbor would see that, I don't mind it dropping down, I'm just saying it's going to drop down. It's gonna, at the end, it's gonna have to drop down to almost nothing.
He said it, you, you say. But it leaves this open corner exposure to. You're talking about really about plopping, plopping over the. Or is the ground flat inside there?
The wall is gonna, the wall is, the new wall is gonna go right to that railing. Or not right to the railing, actually, right to the block, there's gonna be a four inch, if you look at that railing. The railing comes here and the block is like here, there's, there's gonna be that four inches in the, the wall is gonna go right to that. Is it gonna taper down a little bit? Yeah, because.
It'll step down.
Oh, yeah, it'll step, but not, there's not gonna be a big open void. And, and if there is, we'll, we'll fix it there, but it's not gonna have an open void. No way.
Oh, geez. Once upon a time, everything.
There you go.
John, I saw something.
The wooden fence goes right to it.
The wooden fence goes right to it, the wooden fence is stopping.
It goes, it goes, it's beyond, it's behind that. The wooden fence doesn't connect with that rail.
No, it does not, it stops at the top of the hill. Which, can you go a little further over?
Oh, heck, where?
That way.
That way.
That's all I got, not pictures. Move our, move our faces.
That's right here.
Oh, I can't do that.
I, you don't wanna play with that, well, shut up and don't, don't be mad at me.
Oh. Yeah.
Hey, there we go.
So are you concerned that the abutter is going to, because the fence isn't going the entire length of the retaining wall? That they are going to see the backside of the wall?
No, here's, I just, A, I wanna just understand it, cause I, I, I don't think I was. Um, B. From our standpoint, from the planning board, I just don't quite understand. The retaining wall only going up, going up four inches or whatever, short of where the grade is for that. And that just doesn't make sense to me and I don't know if that.
The grade we were talking about was from the other way, from the house out.
Yeah, the fence.
That, that's what we're talking about, yeah.
But the grade. It's coming from the house, it's going down. And then there's gonna be a four foot drop, or four inch drop, I'm sorry, not four, four, four inch drop, and then you're gonna retain it well.
No. You had it right, you could explain it again like you did, that, that four inch drop is not here and then a four inch drop. That four inch drop is from five feet over here, like to here, dropping four feet.
And in between, it's gonna be here, grass and a fence.
No, but I, maybe I misheard. Was not coming up to the top of the grade of that property, am I wrong on that?
No, you're. Yes, that's what we're saying.
But you wouldn't want dirt to come flat up against the top of the retaining wall. Because then all that's gonna happen is the dirt and the water is just gonna sheet off the top of the retaining wall and fall flat down. So you want a graduated slope from the top of the very level of it, so that there is graduated water down.
I don't know, I'm not saying you want flat and then retaining wall. I don't have a problem with the slope going from the house to where the retaining wall is, but it sounds like. Where that dirt stops and the retaining wall begins. There is a gap of something, no? Is that not right? Is the dirt coming basically right to the top of that retaining wall?
Dirt's gonna come to the top of the retaining wall.
And I misheard you before.
And, and the fence is going to be right there.
Yeah, and, but the. Well, you said the fence is gonna be a little bit over onto the property, right? It's not right on. It's on your property, but um, a little bit off from where the retaining wall is.
Mostly right on the retaining, right, I mean, not on, just right there.
Yeah.
Put a solitude right down, right behind.
Yep, that's what they're gonna do, go, solitude's right there.
Alright. Um, so that's fine, so I just misunderstood you, um. Yeah, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out, I don't see this as any, any significant change. I think I would rather. Because it is dealing with the neighbor, have something in the file that, from the neighbor that just says, I'm fine with the proposal. Um, that would make me feel more comfortable, but other than that, I don't see it as being. A, a major change that you need to do anything to amend the, the site plan. But I think I would, I think having something from the neighbor would be appropriate.
I'll do my best.
Okay.
There, um, there are yes, 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 but they don't like to put anything in writing. I'll ask again. I'll ask, I know that. They were happy when I said, nah, I would shouldn't need anything written, but.
But here's, I, I don't even, they don't even need to be happy about it, they can just, you know, just say they don't have an objection to the change. That's being proposed, I mean, that's all I care about, I don't really.
I got you.
Um. But I don't see it as being major in any kind of way to the overall project that was proposed, that it needs an amendment to the. Special firm, to this, you know, to this, yeah, to the site plan for the special firm, anybody disagree with that? Alright.
Uh, uh, as far as the idiosyncrasies of witnessing how it's built and, and meeting up with everything. It's all gonna, it's all going to meet properly, that's the whole point of doing the wall is to make sure that we have no gaps and we have no dangers. So it, you know, I can't tell you exactly how, how it's going to, you know. Meet, but it will meet properly and.
No, and that's, and I appreciate that, I just, you know, I have to get it straight in my head, because then, you know, otherwise we have. We're holding it on discussions like Depot Square for a year while people are yelling and screaming about the way it turned out from the plants. Um, so I just wanna make sure that I have it straight in my head. Um, okay, any other um questions from the board?
I would like at least one of those copies.
Where?
Are you gonna both? Um. I'm almost afraid to ask this question, but are there any? Comments from anybody that has been going on to the board regarding this project? Uh, going well or not going well or going. Anything that you could share with me?
It's worth, I've heard nothing, so that's all I can say.
John be the, John would be the one who would answer any phone calls.
I have only uh heard a comment regarding the. Length of fence that was extended into the uh power of what.
Yeah, and we've corrected that, we, we cut that back four feet, then I've said my part. Yeah, and that was a problem anyway, that was an obvious problem that, um, again, the design said fence goes to here. And when you get to the end of beach road and you go, I can't see any cars coming here, does the fences do all, do all? But yeah, immediately, immediately was taken there.
Good is you can't see the cars and I think you have a fence's job, right?
Yeah, I mean, uh, Chief Landis called me and. You stay in care of the next day.
That's the only comment I would, that fence was, yeah, yeah, okay.
It's funny, cause I saw that same activity myself in the dumpster, because the dumpster was there, I'm like. I don't go, I don't go out that way and the dumpster is blocking and then I look, well, just not, the dumpster and the fence too. Oh, yeah. But, alright, thank you. Um, so just getting a, a letter to put into the file.
Right, right.
Yeah, okay, and then I can pretty much proceed if, with that letter.
Just a letter that says they've seen the new, they've seen the new plans and they have no objection for that.
Addition of the wall.
Yeah.
Yes, Ken. Thank you gentlemen.
Thank you, Ken.
Well, good evening.
Good night.
Thank you.
Ah.
In the same night.
I wasn't even looking at, I wasn't even gonna look that way.
And it's fun.
Um, yeah.
Which one's first?
The desk.
Ninety-five.
Hang on.
Only in Massachusetts.
Moving that required.
Yeah, we're gonna approve it. Well.
Now, we are gonna, what's the language, Marcus?
Makes me feel so loved.
We endorse.
Yes.
We endorse the plan, so we changed the verbiage, you know, John bought a fucking bucket of candy here.
What did you do?
I'd also just, you know, if John's anything like me, I'm not sure fresh would be the word that I would necessarily use, but John may have. At my house, it's like, okay, what Easter were these from?
You know, I, I have to admit, I, it was a lot of discipline. You know, I, I have to admit, I, it was a lot of discipline.
I'm not feeling well, I need to go home.
So we're uh looking at ninety-five Sheep pasture road. Uh, this is the acreage that it's some kind of. Uh, Bell Point, the current owner reached out. Um, historically, there was an A and R that carved up a half dozen or so lots. Uh, it was the northern front of Sheep pasture road. This is um. If you're heading north in Sheep pasture road, you go past uh that last set of agricultural uh acreage where they just reconstructed a barn last year. Uh, and this is wooded land. Um, as you're sweeping up the hill towards the right where it levels off. A particular piece of property slopes up fairly significantly uh as you uh travel westward. But the requested um A and R lot doesn't have any uh issues with. Access, that's actually a fairly level portion of the property. Uh, they are providing more than two hundred feet of frontage. Uh, they also have adequate lot width as measured at the front setback line. Like this was proper, make them zoom in on it. Or, so everyone online. Um, and they have adequate. Uh, the narrowest point. Um, along the property is greater than the minimum required width of the lot in our forty district.
I don't, just pure curiosity, is there a reason for the shape of this lot?
I don't have a good answer uh for that. I did, uh, I did look at the topography out there and essentially. Uh, well, at the northernmost extent of this property, there's a bit of a, there's steeper terrain, so perhaps this relates to what might come next.
Okay. Yeah, I guess, just like curiosity. We don't see that every day.
No.
Without a reason, at least. Um, all right, any um.
Who, who owns the property? Bell Point. Is the current owner of the property.
Any questions, comments from the board?
Just because you should see this on PIS. Oh, okay, you're on.
All right, so, hearing nothing. Marcus.
Marcus Phelps make a motion to endorse the A and R plan for ninety-five Sheep pasture road.
We will do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
David Sutton, I.
Dave Spina, I.
Okay, thirty-three Congamon Road. You have property of John V and Teresa S. Coward. And they wish to. Let me see, go again. Uh, they wish to divide off some acres from that property so they can combine it with other land that they own. Uh, this creates, what they're showing is parcel A would be the remaining land. Uh, which conforms to. Um. The frontage and air requirement for a lot. And does not create any conformities with the existing structure.
Does it, is, does it leave enough space here or?
Oh.
A lot to be built behind it, or do you think they're gonna cut that off to go towards the agricultural stuff?
That's a, it's a good question. The future intent isn't uh quite clear, uh, only that this is not intended to be buildable. Um, but it is intended to be combined with that parcel. That adjacent. The rear wood parcel. Uh, that's what they'll combine with.
Both sides of the back corner.
Okay. And that rear one. Actually has frontage on college higher.
So the A and R lot is gonna be parcel A, right? Parcel A?
Yes.
Because the remaining is not, doesn't comply.
That's correct.
So they don't need it for.
Just transferring.
Yeah.
Land and making sure that what's left behind conforms to zone.
Yeah. Same way that you use it for more agriculture. Wouldn't be bad then.
Okay.
Um. All right, uh, Marcus.
Marcus Phelps make a motion to endorse the A and R plan for thirty-three Congamon Road.
For a second.
Do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
David Sutton, I.
Dave Spina, I. All right, all set.
You gonna sign these? Uh, say yes.
All right, what do we got? Uh, record plan endorsement, A. Conquer road is state law. We just have to do that.
Uh, I'll just, it will take a discussion. I was expecting A conquered, but it's uh, what I did receive was the old like three X um. Plan for endorsement to the law of Meadow.
On Meadow.
Uh, would be that two hundred foot restriction depicted on the plan.
All right, we don't have A conquered yet.
Would you mind?
Okay. Um, and. Master Plan Advisory Committee update, Marcus.
Okay, Master Plan Advisory Committee, uh. We've been uh holding focus group meetings. Uh, John has been posting those notices so the public can participate in a hybrid manner. And we had an economic development focus group last week. Uh, which went very well. As far as I know, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission facilitated it. Two of their people and they'll be developing uh the minutes and so forth from that. It was recorded, so. It'll, it's available online for people to watch. Who are interested. Uh, there will be a meeting coming up. It's really a listening session on aging in Southwick. Which is coming up Monday, February thirteenth. Twelve thirty P M. I guess in this room, John?
I'll probably check. That may be downstairs in the senior.
Probably, oh yeah, in the senior center possibly. Or in our room here, land use meeting. So that's coming up on the thirteenth. And most of our meetings now are. Involve the, involve with looking at the technical papers that Pioneer Valley Planning Commission is developing. And also Corey Rowland, who is a new member of the committee, has been doing uh drafting a vision statement. Which uh I think we're on the third iteration of that. And also some other supporting material to go with that. So Keith Eames, she's calling. Anyway. Well, next meeting is February sixteenth. Thursday. That's all.
All right, minutes, everybody got a chance to look at minutes?
Hey, Mike, you guys never voted on the January third minutes.
Yep, um. Thank you.
Yep.
That's. Maybe you hiding out there somewhere?
Um, all right, so January third, everybody, those changes got incorporated. Everybody's okay with them?
From January third?
Yeah, they either get circulated, I think, again, if I remember correctly, I can look, but um. All right, do I hear a motion uh to approve the January third? Uh, meeting minutes?
Marcus Phelps, so move.
Do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Something or I.
So the Sutton, I.
Dave Spina, I. All right, um. Do I hear a motion to approve the January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three minutes?
The typo on that, Mike, Mike, there's a typo there, I believe.
Uh, where is it?
Uh, seven thirty on the second page. At the, I'm sorry, at the, at the seven twenty more running road, third line up from the bottom says. Flexible residence for development requirements are not see that in subdivision. I believe that's where it's supposed to be seen.
R instead of but.
No, the requirement but not see, it says not see, I believe it's not see.
It was corrected, it was corrected.
Okay.
Yeah.
But not seen, right?
Yeah, no, that was corrected. At least on the paper copy that's in front of me. I'd have to go back and look at the electronic, but. Uh, it was correctly.
Was it, anything else, Dick?
All right. Um. Did we get a second?
No, we did not.
Do I hear a second?
For a second.
Roll call vote. Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
David Sutton, I.
Dave Spina, I.
Mr. Thornton, I.
Okay. Mr. Sutton.
Make a motion to close the meeting.
Do I hear a second? Dave Spina, second. I'll just stay here until we hear a second.
Mr. Spina spoke.
Came through for you guys.
Hi.
Hi.
Good job, David.
Perfect hour and twenty-seven minutes. Beautiful. Now we have another hour and a half to sign those things.
You got a thumbs up from Mr.